...of June nineteen, two thousand nineteen Franklin Township reported supervisor meeting the order at seven oh seven. In attendance are Supervisor Day Schneider Torres. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Harbin Starkel, Commission Chairman Paul Agassi, Township Manager Joe McLaw, and Secretary Sharon Larson. There are four members of the public. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're at the public comment section. A public comment is for anything related to items on tonight's agenda. The last public comment is for items not on the agenda. It's important that you state your name clearly to the tape, see your comments fully reflected accurately. Please state whether you're a township resident or township taxpayer. In this case, we have such a small group, I'll take comments during the issue. Typically, what we will do is the board will discuss an issue and then we'll open up a public comment. Anybody have any comments now? Go ahead.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the May fifteen point nineteen version three meeting that is presented by the township secretary.
Second.
Thank you, David. Second by David. Is there any discussion on the debate?
I didn't have any corrections.
That'll be good.
Yeah.
Very good. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. So the version passes four zero.
I make a motion to the Board of Supervisors about Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve regarding the disposition of records of the Board of Supervisors meeting May fifteenth.
Second.
Second by David. Issues and any discussion. The purpose of this motion is to allow us to erase the audio tape from the previous meeting. The tape is transferred to the official meds. We do maintain the videotapes all time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay.
I make a motion that the board prove the May Treasurers Report, which includes the following disbursements: the general fund with disbursements and transfers of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three twenty-six; the park and recreation fund with disbursements of eighteen thousand, seven forty-four, and forty-nine cents; the open space fund with disbursements of six thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventeen cents; and the fire hydrant fund with disbursements of five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents, leaving a balance in all funds totaling one million three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six twenty-seven thirty-eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stephen. Any discussion?
No.
It looked pretty straightforward to me. In that case, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post say nay. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, the May zoning office was reported. There were six permits issued, twenty-five billion inspections. Fee collection on buildings were one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Miscellaneous fees collected one thousand one hundred and fifty, and there were two zoning issues reported, thirty-three twenty-seven Hapleton and sixteen twenty Primal, New London Road.
What updates?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, as usual, we're waiting for the judge to respond to the thirty-three twenty-seven Hapleton Rev issue, so we can do something, so.
It's been in limbo for about three, four months now, three months?
We had a hearing in, this hearing was in February, I believe.
We still haven't ruled.
So Mark, is there any place for you to go back? I know you have to be good, you have to be patient, you can't bug the judge. Is there like?
Well, we could continue to try to assess fines, but the last time we went to the lower court judge, the district judge, he said he didn't want to make a ruling until the common justice judge made a ruling. So we are limited by, you know, our desires.
We just kind of sit and generate some anxiety, but we've got to sit on it.
We have numerous clients that are waiting for decisions from this judge.
Is he sick or is he not?
Judges don't have timeframes and operate around.
He's a senior judge.
He's a senior judge, yeah.
Must be.
All right.
We were in his court March twelfth.
It's not six months yet, I guess.
Nancy's in the way. Nancy will be here in five minutes.
Okay. How about sixteen twenty, Jim?
Sixteen twenty. Jeff Vogels received an email from the father of the property owner, and he stated that they are going to put the property up for sale because when they looked into the stormwater issues that they have to deal with and the, some other things to bring it up to code, so Jeff can get them a CO, they felt it was, the cost was prohibitive, so they're going to sell the property. So Jeff told them that they have to cease all activity by June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth.
Do they have to do anything to their property at all to sell it?
No.
Okay, I don't think so, I'm just curious.
No.
Thank you. So the PC did not meet June, so we'll turn this over to Paul. Do you want to talk to us again?
Yeah, we can read, but I'd just like to mention, Oxford had canceled its May vote because of the current weather, and so it got moved actually for tomorrow. So the talk on the home front, stories of the American Revolution will be tomorrow at seven in Oxford at the Nusantara Lodge. And if somebody wants more information, they can go to the Oxford Area Association website for more information on that. And it being summer once again, the planning commission and Chester County, various Chester County sort of societies are starting up a series of walks and town tours and village walks. And it began June thirteenth in Westchester, and the easiest way for anyone to find out about this is probably to simply go online and search for town tours and village walks two thousand nineteen Chester County Planning Commission, and you'll get it. But for the, I can give you exactly to the township office.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Just a little part.
All right, it's good.
All right, I guess the next issue is the MS four. And just a quick summary, I'll read a few of the targets here, and some questions we need to ask before we get involved with the motion, so. At the April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen board meeting, the board authorized our engineer advertise the total maximum daily load, TMD, out plant for the white clay in Christiana River watershed and pollution reduction. Can be our plan for the Big Alp Creek and Chesapeake Bay watershed. The advertisement requested input from the public. These entire reports were posted on the township website on April nineteenth along with the public notice. Residents were notified about it in an official update due to the way the meeting dates fell. Instead of a thirty-day review period, it was approximately a sixty-one day review period. During that time, the township did not receive any input from the public. So this is a long drawn out affair, trying to figure out how we're going to meet these requirements of the MS four. And there were three basic BMPs, which they call best management practice, but there are methods of managing sediment runoffs. And one of them was the stream bed restoration, where you essentially go along the stream bed and reshape the stream bed and to eliminate the erosion. Some places you make it wider. They're pretty intensive and it's pretty expensive affair. And the other one are the BMPs for the, many of the places have basins that collect rainwater, and then they allow overflow to fills, but then most of it seeps in. Those basins are also BMPs, but they've gotten very complicated, they've got internal parts to them. And then the third one is to plant a number of trees on private and public property. And we chose to go with the planting of the trees. And the primary reason was that the stream bed upgrades, you could put a hundred thousand dollars and put one of these stream beds together, and one good rainstorm would just destroy it. Same situation with the basins because of the complicated internals. You can, they're highly subject to damage. So trees seem to be the path of least resistance. So we need to plant a lot of trees, and we've got five years to figure out how to do that. So we'll be talking to private owners and see if they're willing to allow us to put some trees on. So that's, the permits based on planting trees.
Of course, we have to get their approval and state first.
Yeah, the permit is put together, but it's going to be submitted for approval by, the DEP's got to approve it. They seem to have changed the rules many times on us. The time we thought we were good, they moved the goalposts on us. So hopefully this one will stay. One other thing I wanted to add to that is that in the staff meeting, I guess we talked about the cost, and that is something in the lines of fifty thousand without getting assistance from Shane Morgan, which the pastor said they are wanting to pay, I think, a fifty percent. So that's a lot less than a hundred thousand. It's true, but I can tell you that if I go back a couple of years, we estimate for the township to spend two million dollars every ten years. It's two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand a year on this thing. So I'm not sure what they're going to eventually make us do, but that's what they want us to do with this permit. We had a previous permit cycle where everybody, they had a whole lot of training, and all the township engineers went to the training, made sure that they could prepare the permits in a way that the DEP wanted it. And when everybody submitted the permits, they didn't have to do anything. And so that wasn't what they wanted. So they changed the rules, moved the goalposts, and now we're at this stage. So what we'll eventually have to do, I don't know, that's what appears we have to do now with this tree thing, and we've got five years to do it. Fair.
And of course, once we submit, we don't really know when they're going to get back to us, but we'll wait till we hear from them.
Sometimes it takes a long time for them to come back and tell you that they don't like your permit for you at all. So there is something in there that could cause some issues. The Chester County Conservation District also manages, which is the enforcement arm of the DEP, generates erosion sediment plans for local farmers. And most of the farmers around here have a conservation agreement. So we didn't think that because the Conservation District already is managing the farmers, that we needed to add that into our total. So that's what's the general consensus of nearly all townships, and we've submitted our permits that way, so. What they will do with it, I don't know. Find out when they get it. Find out with any other, Nancy nail points?
No.
We beat this thing up pretty bad.
Yeah, we worked pretty hard on it, and I think the guys did a good job, and it sounds like we have community support too, so it seems like a good path forward. That's just the one unknown, is that they don't accept our exclusion of conservation lands.
Let's see, there are some questions that I have to ask here before we get into the motion. Has the township received any written comments?
Yeah.
Are there any comments from the public tonight? But the minutes reflect that there were no comments from the public. Are there any comments from the board?
No.
No. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors authorize LTL consultants to submit the revised MS four permit application to be received by the DEP no later than June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Second by David. Any discussion? We beat this thing up. The discussion period is over on this thing.
Yeah, we've got to focus on this one.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay. Motion carries five oh.
John, will you put on the tape when Nancy arrived, please?
I'm sorry, Nancy arrived a little bit late for the meeting, but right at the beginning of the MS four.
Approximately one a.m.
Okay. All right, so what are we, I think, so now we're down to this table, I want to start talking about this.
The solar ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just preface it, say why we're doing it. A zoning officer came to us quite a while ago and asked us about whether we needed an ordinance to manage solar. And none of the board felt we did at that point, because we have fifteen of these solar facilities in the township right now, fifteen's, it's a mix of rooftop and backyard ones and one wind turbine. And they're allowed as a customary accessory to residents. So we don't regulate them.
They just have to meet the setback requirements.
For the property.
Yes.
Okay. But then recently, we've had some inquiries about some larger solar arrays, ones that would produce significant amount of power, enough power that you would export for the primary purpose of the facility, export it to the grid and reap those financial benefits of selling that power. So what the concern was, and David will take this name, none of yours, when you consider the size of one of these things, I just didn't want it to become a neighborhood nuisance, so what we're concerned about are setbacks, screening, and reflections, so if that would become a nuisance. I don't have a post to it, I don't need anybody in the board to post to it or all, we just don't, take a look at some general rules and regulations, so. Go ahead, David. First, you start with this latter right here.
From LTL consultants. Dear John, at the request of Franklin Township to consider an ordinance to best promote the use of solar electric energy systems, I offer a brief draft of what should be considered. Establish definitions. Facility owner has to establish. Operator. Solar energy system and solar energy generating facility. We should also establish types of uses, such as residential, permitted accessory use up to twelve KV.
It should be KVA.
KVA.
It's close to, if you want to convert it to kilowatt hours, you probably multiply it by point nine or point eight or whatever the power factor is for solar.
Twelve KVA. Commercial permitted access use up to twenty KVA. Solar energy generating facility, which is the parameters for when a system becomes a generating facility and/or at the principal use. When permitted, as a permitted accessory use, or in other words, how it should be permitted, as a permitted accessory use or as a principal use, a solar energy generating facility and considered by conditional use only? That's a question. Considered by conditional use only?
I think it's whether it's permitted or right versus whether it's conditional.
And of course, there's the normal stuff, setbacks, roof conditions.
The general idea was to have a discussion here and see what elements of this thing the board would like to have some control of, and then charge the PC to start working on an ordinance. And that, that'll take quite a while. We could establish tenants of the ordinance here tonight, in the event that somebody would come in with a facility, then we would at least have some of the tenants of what the ordinance was, and if we had to approve a facility, then we could use those as part of the conditional use of appearance, however, how we did it, so. I've read a couple of, I've read these different examples here, and a couple of thoughts. One is setback. Can we have a different setback for a solar paneling type thing that is not on the roof compared to traditional? What is our current setback? Because I know we, Nancy, I know we had a discussion about this maybe six months ago about someone potentially putting in solar very close to the property.
Right, that was, yeah, that was kind of a year ago.
And if we're going to do something more elaborate, commercial speaking, I just think that we could have, allow for hopefully a greater setback than ten feet or whatever the current number.
My position, I wasn't going to try to regulate the waters. We don't now, so.
Well.
It's suggesting that we do, but we haven't regulated in any, in any way other than the normal property setbacks.
Well, if somebody does something more commercial than residential, that's one thing.
The residential ones, what I consider residential is one that essentially consumes the power it produces on site.
Right.
They're essentially displacing part of their electric bill, not, they're not exported.
I actually think the two are your brain. I think, I think when we create this ordinance, we need to at least acknowledge the residential as a type, and then if we're going to say, and define what residential is, because I know Jeff had defined as a certain.
Yeah.
And I have a question about those numbers, because they're not, they're not aligned with what's in the Eastern war. But we have to come up with some numbers everybody can agree to.
I wouldn't worry about those numbers tonight, because I don't have the conversions handy, so.
Right, but I'm just saying they're very dramatically different by a factor of almost a hundred compared to what's in the, in the Eastern war versus what's in Jeff. It just means we got to get it lined up. But it seems like you have residential, which is your, but we should at least address it, even if we're not going to do anything different to it, if it's a setback, if it's a current setback, so state, state that, so it's there. And then you have commercial, and I think they had small commercial, and then they had large commercial, however that's defined. And then you have these generating facilities, which is, like, I don't, I think, it sounds like it's huge, but I think you need to acknowledge all of them, and then say, you know, what, how you define them, where they're permitted, and what setbacks are, what the decommissioning is.
That's one of, that's exactly what I was thinking. Another question, again, this is kind of, this is mine, you, but I'll ask you, does stormwater apply to something that is not on a roof?
Yes.
Yes.
Stormwater is on the.
Somewhere it got referenced in one of the, maybe it was Eastern war, that as long as it could be shown that the water was curving us, that it didn't count, which to make, makes sense to me.
But you still, that is still, well, you still wouldn't need to submit a stormwater plan to show that you could, that it is the case, and the storm is taken care of.
Yeah. Because you could see, if you need to start putting stormwater restrictions, I mean, stormwater remediation in, that's extremely expensive, and it would discourage anyone from, I mean, this isn't a huge profit for the people who do it. So I think if you start asking for stormwater plans that involve digging swales and things like that. Do you answer the plan, you just don't, is what you need remediation? We would have to know for sure that, I would want to know what other townships do, because it's everywhere, you know, solar's everywhere.
Yeah, we're trying.
And I would want to understand, you know, are they asking for stormwater plans with solar farms?
I don't think they want some stormwater, because you're covering the ground with an impermeable surface.
Well, the volume of it isn't much, and you have space between the panels, so if you walk at a.
But there's a difference, if you look at, if you look at an open field that receives stormwater, and then you put something there that blocks it, you don't get the same absorption.
But if you look at it, if you look at it at a solar farm, it's arrays of panels, and so the water is dripping right into that local area versus a huge building where it's, there's no local coverage.
But it changes the way the ground absorbs the stormwater.
Yeah.
So that, that needs to be explored. I don't have the answer.
Yeah, right, and my point is lots and lots and lots of people have done it, lots and lots of townships, let's see what they've done. I mean, we don't have to make it more difficult than other townships.
I think we probably need to get some kind of ruling from, I guess, Chester County Water Resources.
Well, look at the Eastern war. They, they do pretty well. They do. They said that if you can demonstrate that the water infiltrates.
How do you demonstrate that?
It's up to you. Well, what I would think is if it's on level ground and it's not going to run anywhere, that it comes off a panel straight down and goes in the ground.
Because the panels themselves aren't that big, you're not talking, you're talking about a lot of panels, but each one's on an angle, so it's running right there.
Right, and again, if it's, if it drops off the panel, it goes into the ground.
Yeah. I think it's a case by case basis, John, I think they could, the point is, they have to, they have to make, the person, the owner, whoever's proposing this, has to, has to make the case.
I think so, I don't know how, but I think you probably ought to talk to Chester County Water Resources, or Jane Bauer, on what their, what their official position is.
And the other one I want to, also.
I want to adopt an ordinance in D in conflict with that.
The other thing I also want to, just again, food for thought as we work on this, is first half, A, A H, where it talks about the, for, there's no functionality for a year, and then they have six months. In a later fourth part, or Mark, I think he had put together some blanks, there's no decommissioning period. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to have something that has been abandoned for a year and a half to sit there. Is a year and a half, two, quite, this is just a question, as we think about this. Is a year and a half too much time for something to be abandoned? And then to C, the applicant should provide financial security, including the costs associated with decommissioning, dismantling, and removing. What dollar amount is that? I guess it's, it's, they have to figure that out, but is it too much money?
That's up to them, it makes sense, doesn't it?
Well, it definitely makes sense, but.
So Stephen, I'm sorry, are you saying that you're afraid that they would just leave them there?
I just, it's like the idea that this isn't working out, or whatever, something happens, and you have a field that is not being attended, and you have these solar panels or just something that, you have something that is now a year and a half, and the township has no control over anything, because it's within that, within a year and a half with them.
So I would agree that there should be something in the ordinance that says that after they're no longer, you know, either after they agree time period, because most of them have contract rights.
Right, there'll be some.
So after that agreed contract time, it needs to be removed. And someone, I think John had mentioned East Drummore, they made sure that people committed to twenty-five year periods, because otherwise they can be coming in and replacing them every five years.
Why couldn't that get more considered the length above the panel?
It can be, but the, the point was that as technology changes, if we don't put a requirement for time, people could be digging up those fields, you know, every couple of years, every five years. And so I, I think it was in Drummore that they said, hey, you know. Was it a conversation we had with someone?
Well, they, I know they said that they leased, the fields were leased for twenty-five years, and they had to be returned to fields.
Right, I mean, I think as long as you have the requirement, you have to return it. And, and you have financial money put aside.
They didn't allow any concrete, your fine.
And no concrete foundations, yeah, which is also really important. I thought the Eastern war was really, I mean, you don't have to follow what, exactly what they do, but if we could hit the points they, they hit, and put our own type of requirements, I thought they, they hit all the major points. It was pretty thorough, I thought, including things like, no, you can't use them to display commercial advertising, and things that you might not have thought of, but that we don't want to have done.
Well, and she, the secretary that I spoke with when I got that disorment, she said that the buffering has to be more than, you know, what it would be on a farm or something.
Right, yeah.
They have to be ornamental trees and nice shrubs that are going to block the view of all the panels.
So maybe if everyone agrees, maybe this would be a good starting point for the planning commission, and then as we agree to do things differently, then at least we can.
If, if it's all right with the board, I would still like to ask Jeff Vogels to, to do a little bit more beyond this, so that he, so some of his ideas are in there, because he's the one that has to enforce anything.
But can you build it off of East Drummore and make sure the definitions are aligned?
Yes, and then, and then we can give all this to the planning commission and say, you know, is there anything that you see, because they have a lot of other ideas too.
John, I have a question, a bigger, bigger question. So this is solar, do we want to include wind in this, like, the paragraph on wind, and also they had alternative, or do you just want it just the details, the board on the experience?
The township that represented it considers this, both those are considered together as.
If it can make sense.
Alternative energy regulation. Because wind is used by agriculture.
Alternative energy.
So we don't have to come back later to redo with wind. I mean, it's very similar.
Well, when you're going to have heights.
The height thing is.
So, okay, so just listening to the discussion, key points are, we talked about, it looks like there are three levels of a facility. We have residential, which will be up to a certain number. I don't want to commit to the numbers yet.
Right. Right.
But then there's what I would say, maybe you've got a farmer that would put in more than a resident for his own use.
Right.
He might put in something bigger. So that could be the next, the next tier up. And then from there on up, then it's.
Then it's so large.
Commercial industrial.
Would we ask the farmer to do something different with the residence?
I don't know yet. I don't know yet. But everybody's got three layers, everybody, if you look at the ordinances, they all have three layers of this. I don't know what the breakdown would be. The breakdown that I kind of.
So the larger systems, they had to do more concept plan. There was more, the larger, the bigger the pain. Like I said, for residential, it was pretty relatively simple, I'd say, and simple. But the larger you got, the more you had to do smaller work.
The first two that we talked about, that I talked about, the residence and maybe a farm operation, would probably not export any power. They would all consume whatever they produce on site. But the larger ones, they're in there to export power and make money. They're the ones that I think the ordinance is really directed at.
Yeah. So I see kind of residential and then large.
It could be, it could be just two layers, but.
I would start with that because I would want a farmer who needs five more panels than a resident to be put through more work than what's selling it.
It may not be any difference. I mean, I don't know what it is. We just kind of start talking about it.
Okay.
But there may be a medium too. So I think you just have to, once again.
Just look it over.
Just looking at the other setbacks was one of my issues going in here. And then the buffering fence and glare, they're the three items that I thought before I even saw Jeff's.
I mean, I did read through, a lot of documents say that the whole point of solar is to absorb the light and not to glare. So the data says that there's more glare off of office buildings and carbon shields than solar. And I realize.
Just got to make sure that it doesn't end up in some odd way reflecting on somebody's house continuously or something like that.
Yeah.
We haven't had that, as we've asked residents.
Our house doesn't glare at all, even the panels. And there's no glare. Because they're designed to, you know, absorb.
I think we need to let the PC figure out what that is. Stormwater was a big question.
I would start with East Drummore's approach. And Don is exactly right. What they say is that you just need to prove that the stormwater will infiltrate into the ground beneath the panels.
I could talk to Jeff Vogels, repeat and see what they think, if that's something possible.
Okay, so probably.
What I've seen, what I've seen in regards to water absorption, I believe most of the solar panels that I've seen had a track of stone on the ground, which allows the water to get in, go down into the ground, it comes off of the solar panels.
Stormwater management.
Probably, probably will give you better ground absorption than grass.
But again, if we, so if we write it so that, obviously, you're going to learn, John, what other, what other townships do. If someone can prove that it's just as well absorbed without stone, then they don't need to do so. You know, so I would say allow them to show us and then go from there.
All right. I think we want to consult with Chester County Water Resources, Chester County Planning Commission, and L T O on the stormwater plan, what their level of knowledge is related to this. I can't step away from this easily. We're driving everybody else in the township to comply with the stormwater stuff, so.
Yeah, as long as, as long as they're happy with the way the water flows, no problem.
Of course, the other four towns.
The other parts, the last part here is the decommissioning. Yeah, we need a decommission. Whatever it is, we need that.
Right. And if they need to set money aside, so be it.
I would think that's typically the way. It's not some kind of escrow account or certainly an agreement that they would do it.
So now the zoning, John, you know, the way they handle it is that they have an agricultural, it's conditional use. If Pete, just, you know, I guess, I'm sorry, if Jeff really feels strongly that's not right, then we can suggest a different.
Well, again, as we talk to Jeff, you know, we can, we can adjust the zoning for different, in the different zoning districts to say that it's allowed in this district by conditional use. And we can also put a restriction that like the larger generating facilities have to be on a certain sized lot. That's all.
So we would determine which zoning districts would be able to take this then, right? We'd adjust that zoning to allow it.
I think the big question that Jeff Vogels lays out at the beginning of his letter is, does the board want to regulate the accessory types of uses that you would expect on the roof of the house or in someone's backyard?
I'm not so anxious.
And if the answer's yes, then that's a major item of, you know, these ordinances. Or do you just want to regulate the commercial type of facilities, the larger facilities? And where would you put those in commercial or agricultural zoning districts? So those are, I think that's kind of the start, a starting question. And if the decision is, we think we should regulate both as a township, then at least, then the regulations can flow from, the additional questions can flow from that decision, so.
So you could be regulating residential, but it would be anything different than it would be for.
Well, you could just have, you could define these larger systems that people are using for commercial purposes only. Say that you're going to allow them in these other zoning districts.
Based on the current.
Commercial, industrial, you know, maybe agricultural zoning districts, that's a bit more. And just allow anyone to make use of, you know, putting solar panels on a roof of their house and you wouldn't have any.
We already, we already set a precedent to how we do it. It seems to work. We're not having much trouble with it.
For the residential ones.
I'm not anxious to dip into the residential ones.
And even medium, I'm a little worried about, but large for sure, I think we would be.
Well, Jeff has both of those sizes permitted as accessory uses. So that would just be according to the zoning.
Would you have those small and medium? Yeah. I would hate to, like John says, it works now, but we don't have any large ones. So that's the part that now is a good time to get.
Because the large one, if it's not managed, well, it could be a neighborhood nuisance. I don't want to do that. I might oppose that. All of it is an energy, obviously. We don't want to irritate the neighbors with something they don't want. Or that generates something. This is one other question, Mark. If we do this by conditional use, then we set a precedent.
So if you set a large, in any system.
We set a precedent.
You could have a residential accessory system by conditional use. You could have any, you know, you have a large type of solar arrays, conditional use. That's allowing for an extra level of scrutiny over the application.
Okay, then the other option is to do it by variance in the zoning hearing board and no precedent is set for the first one.
Well, I mean, I think it would be permitted essentially as right, it's permitted as an accessory use in the residential. I think that precedent is set at this point. Because we do have several solar arrays that people have in their backyards. As far as uses for commercial uses, I'm presuming it would be a special use district unless specifically called out because that's the district where all the other uses that don't necessarily have a specific name were permitted.
Well, we also have, there's a large parcel in the A R that somebody is looking at that.
It's not a special use.
So I mean, but I think we have to address it in all the districts. But John, I spoke to Jeff Vogels about going to zoning hearing board group. And he said one of the conditions of a zoning hearing board is that you have a hardship. He said there's no hardship.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to avoid, I'm just trying to step into this thing carefully and say, I don't want to set precedents on the first one, but that's not an option.
There is a mechanism called a special exception, which is like conditional use, but an applicant would have to go to the zoning hearing board and ostensibly prove their case that they meet certain standards, that they're not going to, you know, cause an issue with a neighbor, that they're going to beat the stormwater of their nature. And then the zoning hearing board would basically be in shoes of the board supervisors if they have more conditional use.
But that's not the same as a variance where you have.
No. Well, a variance is if it's not permitted at all, someone would be able to say they have some type of hardship with their property. So I'm not suggesting that we, that that's the necessary, you want to control it, you want to define it, you want to say.
Just want to, just want to talk out the options.
John, you think we've given enough direction for the planning board to take?
Jeff's next.
I think we went.
Jeff gets it next. Yeah, I would like Jeff Vogels to beef this out a little bit and then, and then make sure we're covering the things that the board wants to, and then let the PC expand on it, if that's okay.
Are we ready to have the PC look at it next meeting?
No.
No.
No, we got, we got to see it before it goes.
We want to look at this thing because I think we.
If you go to the PC too soon, you'll start over and stuff. We never would have you want to.
Well, let's just take a long time.
That's why if there's one person that, you know, Jeff can beef this out and then come back to the board and say it's good or I don't like this or whatever, and then the PC can expand on it and, like I said, come up with some of, some of their different requirements.
All right. So we've expressed some concerns about specific areas, so we'll need to focus on.
Right.
The one thing I hope Jeff will work on is I just don't want any gray, what do you want to call it, gray areas, things that are left for interpretation that, we've had problems with other ordinances in the past where there's conflict, there's conflicting information in the ordinance, it's gray, and then we have something that we don't want. I just want to make sure that when Jeff works on this, that it's specific.
Yes. No, I agree with you. I mean, there are some people that like that gray area because that can go any way they want to go. But I, I mean, I like the resident to be able to know what they need to do.
Yeah, well, every time you write one of these ordinances, there are, what do they call, unintended consequences. If you knew what they were, you wouldn't do it. You can't, you don't always see it.
Well, that's why if Jeff starts it and then the PC looks at it, then they may be able to pick up something that he missed, you know, so we don't have issues. They take them back to Eastern War to build from there because I think that's a witness.
I want to read the motion.
So.
I think we're done with this. I think we did pretty decent. Oh, I'm sorry.
So basically, this is some, you want this motion because we finished this discussion and we want to hand this off to the zoning officer.
We already did that one, didn't we?
Yeah.
We just put a motion in there if you wanted to do it, or you could just direct me to talk to Jeff about it. It's up to you.
I say we make it official, make a motion. I make a motion that the board of supervisors direct the zoning officer to draft a solar ordinance for initial review at a future meeting.
I'll second that.
We have two seconds. Stephen.
So is it really, are we drafting an ordinance or is he kind of skoping something out?
Well, he's going to draft, he'll come up with.
Well, yeah, he's drafting it to, we have something to start with.
An outline or something. I'm not looking for a full ordinance. No.
All you have right now is a summary letter and now all these other ordinances.
Yeah, I want more than, more than this.
You want an outline.
Yeah, but I want an outline. I don't want a full ordinance yet. I, I would just, do you know what I'm saying? I don't want to, I don't want to spend days on a beautiful ordinance. I'd rather have an outline so we can bring it back and talk about it.
Would you like me to add the word outline or outline of a draft?
Well, you know better than I how this all works. It doesn't make a difference.
I think you're going to get what you want.
I think Jeff, I think Jeff will understand what we're looking for, but it will probably be better. I'm going to, I'm going to set aside my motion. If I could, Mr. Chairman, table that motion. And I make a motion that the board of supervisors direct the zoning officer to draft an outline of a solar ordinance for initial review at a future meeting. And that obviously is going to include what we've, the information that we've gone over tonight. Is there a second for that motion?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, nay. Looks like it carries five to zero, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, we're still going to take public. So we're certainly open for any suggestions you have. We're very incipient stage on something like this, so it's pretty loose and fluid. So if you have something, let us know. And certainly you can send it to us afterwards and take comments as this process goes on. I would say this is going to take a fair amount of time with the PC, once we get it with the PC. It's just not going to happen overnight. I think the one reason, one reason we wanted to start talking about it, in case something come in, comes in here, we would at least have the tenants of what we might want to control. And if we had to issue a conditional use for, we have at least some thinking behind it.
So as members of the public, is there anything that you would just really be against or for, just to know?
I think, one good point is, you know, I don't have a problem with somebody wanting to put a solar farm up. But yeah, what happens if they decide a few years that it's not the moneymaker they wanted?
So the decommission, yeah.
Yeah, right. Because, you know, now you're going to have a, an architectural structure out there that's, it's not going to really be too artistic.
That's right. I think the board is pretty strong about that, the decommissions, that there has to be some, something in the.
I have three or four houses, I guess they're in the going for succumb. And whatever the row of houses is that busts up next to our property over there, there's three or four houses in a row. They've all got solar on their roofs. And me and my cows never see it glare. No, I mean, I, I go by and I've talked to the one homeowner, he's, there's one tree that's sort of dying. So I've learned the solar is best if it faces southern exposure. So there's just one big dead tree and it's kind of on the property line. I'm like, you're the one with solar if you want to take it down, take it down.
Yeah, they have a specific angle they set this thing up.
You have to catch the summer and winter.
Maximum.
And it's a compromise. It's always a compromise, so it's not, although there are some movable ones, John was talking about. It's some, it's like a petal flower that kind of opens up.
Yeah, then it moves according to the sun, follows the sun all day.
I love that. It's like a electromechanical maintenance nightmare.
If you're in Singapore, there's a ton of them in Singapore. If you find them, they're beautiful. But I can imagine from a maintenance standpoint.
I mean, I spend a fair amount of my time fixing mechanical equipment, Mark. I'm sure you do the same.
We work on a lot of stuff. That can be, that's a whole new generation, though. See, that's a job for a whole new generation.
They're more, they're more efficient because they do, they're exposed to the sun all day, the maximum sun all day long, so you don't need as many of them as you would.
Then they move to the optimum location, angle and direction all the time, but.
And then when it's dark, they close. Or if the windstorm comes up, they close so that they're not damaged.
There's YouTube videos over there.
But they still have to.
The base is kind of all different colors.
That's a lot different than something that's fixed to the ground.
David Gerson here, we're a resident. Is there a disaster check with these types of installations? Meaning, when we say, okay, this is our best guess at an ordinance, because that's no offense, but none of us in this room are solar panel experts. That's no offense, but none of us in this room are solar panel experts. We aren't experts in constructing these things. So how do we know that this thing's going to go in and after 30 years, the, it'll be able to be dismantled in a way that's, you know, environmentally friendly or we'll opt for ordinances in 30 years? Like, how do, what, how do you make sure that we're not making a decision now that it kind of goes back to your unintended consequences? I'm thinking dollar signs, right? Like, we're going to put a huge, I think, well, it's a huge facility here. How do we know or guarantee that the company is going to have the money to remove it, right?
The answer is, the answer is we don't know.
Yeah.
We can, we can ask for the bond fee in place that.
There just isn't a whole.
So how does that, how's that, is there an expert who comes in that says?
Well, they need a building permit, so our building inspector will, will check that out.
Yeah, but I think his, his questions are more along the lines of, you know, what's the overall reliability of the thing over time, and what's it going to do, and we don't know that. There just isn't that, there just isn't that much operating experience out there to say, you know, this one's been in ground for 20 years or 10 years, even 10 years. Probably, at least in Pennsylvania, you probably don't have very many at all, so.
I think the concern is that it's such a fast-moving technology that in five years, it's little bullet panels you've got in the ground are going to get passed far out.
That's what I took away from whoever, was that, you know, if you're not careful, they can be coming in, chewing up your ground every couple of years, replacing.
Well, likely that would be life, right? Because as the, you can't make money on like a minimum.
Years that that's got to stay where it is, right? And that just, they, they have to agree to that as part of the company.
Well, as, as you said, if they have to put a bond up too, I mean, if there's any damage, that's taken care of.
So are we saying that these would have to keep the panel for a period of time even though the technology has moved to the point where?
The, the thing is, how much impact that the replacement part of technology, that's the important part, not that they don't replace it.
What's the environmental, meaning?
Yeah, how do you replace the panel, not that the plan of the panel gets replaced, right?
Because I don't want to get into, into something that we make a decision on their return on investment. I mean, they should, they should figure that out and.
Right, but when they get, like, I looked at what they were asking this one homeowner, and they're asking the homeowner to commit to 25 years, so, and that is.
This was on the roof or panels?
The, this was, sorry, this was for the farm, so this was for the solar farm. So they seem to have a time period. It is a good question, what happens if technology moves faster? I guess that's where we rely on Jeff to help us provide some guidance.
I don't think, I don't think any of us can answer this. Nancy, the question, the one you, the comment you made, is that somebody leasing somebody's land?
Yes, they lease their land. They get a couple, the owner gets a couple thousand dollars, I think, a month or, or, sorry, a year per acre of land. And so there's a contractual agreement between them. But they do set a certain number of years that they're going to commit to pay that homeowner, and that homeowner's going to commit to keep the land from settling.
If it fails for whatever reason, that's the township's responsibility. It's between the homeowner and the. The owner-operator has a, has a fundamental agreement with the local electric provider, PICO or whoever it is, that they'll take the power under the circumstances that they do take it. There's one kind of point that, you know, these things really save some energy, but they essentially displace fuel. Because they don't operate all day long. They only operate when the sun's there and the wind's there. So the power companies still need to maintain a full capital facility to provide the full load all the time, and they need capital maintenance to do that, so the basic benefit is displacing fuel when they're on, but they can't, that's just a point of interest.
Yeah, but when they, if I understand correctly, they would, the utility would not need fuel during the daytime because the solar would sell it back to PICO and then they would have a reserve for fuel at nighttime.
But they still have to have the capital facilities to generate.
To power.
And that's, that's the point.
So, right.
Seems to be the contemporary fashion, and hopefully they work out well.
PICO is committing to, I'm not sure if it's federal regulation or what, but they're committing to increase their solar and alternative energy power each year up through like the mid-'20s, so that's why.
The Fed's got an arm out, and that's what's still in. They have to do it.
So that's why, you know, these corporations are looking and working with local homeowners to see how they can make that happen.
I mean, the other general thing in my business, definitely, that there are subsidies for these things, and without the subsidies, they're just going to go.
There's subsidies for everything, that's basically it. And it wasn't helpful in the discussion.
Economically, if there's no, there's no public subsidy.
You know, we've got, we've got, um, we, we've got pipelines to all of our neighborhoods, and, you know, they're allowed to do whatever they want.
Those things are real profit-making deals. They don't need subsidies to make money.
Oh, fracking industry's got lots of benefits, so whatever, let's just move on.
All right, any other comments? Interesting discussion anyway.
Stick with us, so we'll see you at the meeting if we need to.
Next is.
Marano. Or the heater.
The heater.
Oh, the heater. That should be easy, right?
All right, that's a pretty easy one. All right, just to kind of quick update on the heater, we looked at replacing the the heating unit and the air conditioning unit in here. Heating units failed because the heat exchanger failed, so now we're getting products of combustion from the propane combustion into the inside air, so. I have CO meter and CO2 meter in here and just knocked it off scale, so it's got holes in it, so. We're going to replace the heater. We have, got, John did a really good job of getting some bids. And the question at the last meeting was whether we go with a high-efficiency condensing furnace or a standard furnace. Difference is that the standard furnace is 80% efficient, and the high-efficiency condensing unit is 94% efficient. Big change in efficiency. So the question here is, is it worth going that way? And it's a one-year payback, so it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer.
So anything under five years is a no-brainer on energy, so we would go with a high-efficiency. The issue is that there's a condensate line that continually produces water, and so it recovers the energy, it condenses the water and the combustion gases, that water has to go somewhere. So it's in an unheated space, so we've asked our contractor to tell us how he would manage that. Nancy, you had some experience with yours, so the solution is, is pretty much the same. The unit's about up here somewhere. And then there's a drain in a heated space where we have a water tank, domestic water tank, and there's a drain in there. And the contractor said that he could run that pipe, heat traced, electric traced, and insulated to that drain. So he's going to just adjust his bid for the additional scope of that pipeline. Is that pretty much it?
Yes.
So.
And that's not that expensive.
No, 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 because just looking at the three-year fuel cost, and it was a simple calculation. It's a, it's a.
Go for it.
No-brainer, one year and paid by that, so.
He got back with the price, but it doesn't have all the information because when he was here, he told us that he, there would be some controller that he would put on that, that drain, and his wife, when she did the proposal, didn't include that on there. It's just a price of $775. But that, that's not just to run a pipe, that's for a controller and everything, so she had to talk to him to get the additional information so I could hear back to her to that.
So the price doesn't change, it's just have that additional information?
Yeah, so the total for, for that heater would be $59.70.
Which is a lot less than the others.
That's great.
You said it produces condensate constantly, only in the summertime?
No, not only in the winter, it's heater.
Coming from water, where's the water?
Well, when you, when you combust propane, the products of combustion are CO2 and water in vapor form. So if you condense the water, it's 970 BTUs per pound of energy, and for each pound of water you condense, so that's where the efficiency comes from. Condensing that water, you recover that energy to your air stream, but you got to deal with the condensate in a freezing environment.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
I couldn't say that about the temperature.
You create water, that creates water, you have energy to, to help you do this.
When you burn the fuel, it creates water, but it's in a vapor form, so it's hot.
And then you, you want to trap it.
So normally the 80% furnace just discharges that food gas as, as produced, so it's water at high temperature, so if you condense it.
So the contraction that he's going to put on is to make sure that the pipe does not freeze is going to be controlled by thermostat?
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Because it should only be needed for maybe January, February.
Well, whenever it's freezing.
And it's cooling down.
You can buy these electric heating tapes and they have a little controller built in, but we're looking for something that's a little better than that, a little more reliable, and so he's got something with a real controller, so anyway, it looks like that's going to work out. The only thing, you know, Mr. One, you're for, Marano is a supplier for York, and the other option that John shared with us are, I forget which ones, Carrier, Lennox, or whatever it was. York is fine, it's just, I've had York in my house, I'm replacing them with Lennox as they go, so it's just, just a comment.
But Lennox is just so much more.
Yeah. I think the other thing we're, the other item, we're going to upgrade the air conditioner out there.
Oh, the air?
Yeah, the, the units, how old is it? 10 years old? 2004, so it's good.
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, 2004.
2004.
No, it's a little lower than that.
Six, maybe it's 2006.
2006.
Okay, so it's.
2006.
Yes.
So these outside units, the typical components that fail are the contactor and the starting condenser. So we just found two, we found those components on eBay, both of them for less than 50 bucks total, so we're going to ask Marianne to just replace those two components, and that should increase the liability that.
Just as a reference point, I've used Marano installing, he pumps in my house, and I've used them as my service person for, since, uh, I'm not sure, they did my plumbing, take that back, and they did it for.
We've been real happy with it. In fact, we're going to go to them when, instead of Oxford Plumbing's going. We'll call them, they come the next day, and they're reasonable. All right, we've got one other item.
Well, you make a motion.
So we have to make a motion?
Oh. Oh, okay. Okay, I make a motion that the Board authorize a township manager to move forward with the purchase of new heating system for the township building from Marano Plumbing and Heating in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
I'll second that.
Uh, second. Everybody, David, all here, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries five zero.
Good work, guys.
All right, now, I don't know anything about the ways run line.
Stephen and I do, yes.
Water, so Nancy, you and Stephen are here.
It's kind of a philosophical discussion because Stephen and I were meeting with Jim today and John, Jim is our road, he's the road guy. And the cost was getting up to, there's some problems on ways run, and without getting into specifics, some work that the Roadworks crew did to create a crown is now getting run off and the erosion of one of the neighbors, oh, David went right up there, one of the neighbor's driveways.
Which driveway is this? Lee?
Steve's.
Steve's.
Okay. And so, so fine, we understand that's our, our, you know, responsibility, but Stephen just had a really good point. He said, you know, when is it too much money to just approve it ourselves? He said, maybe the board should discuss it because it's looking at like about $7,000.
Well, there, there's another.
I said $4,000. Oh, there's two.
There's two components, yeah. One is the other side, on Dr. Lawrence's side, there's a pipe that's, that's totally clogged at the end and finally ended up, it's about we need to open. So that's, that is.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah, that part's a no-brainer. But the issue with, with Steve's driveway is when they repaved this, see, before that, that road had a concave in it, and the water just sat there, and when they repaved it and put a crown in the way it should be, the water runs along the road now and it's washing out the gravel at the end of Steve's driveway. So I did some looking in the zoning book, and driveways are supposed to be paved the first 25 feet.
Oh.
And this isn't paved. And we got a permit to do that driveway, but it was never paved.
Is it, how long ago was that?
Yeah, but there were always.
It was 2011.
What about all these grandfather ones? Because I've got lots of.
No, this is 2011. It was, it was done, that zoning ordinance was in place before this was done, and the, and the, uh, the C, where's the mark? The CO we got says the driveway to be constructed in accordance with Township's protocol and zoning ordinance, all work must meet required codes. And our code says it should be paved.
That's interesting.
So he paves it, then the issue goes away, or?
Well, see, here, here's where I'm coming from. The, the issue is it's washing out this stone.
Right.
The water's going where we want the water to go.
Where the water go.
So if it, if it's washing out the stone, to me, that's his problem. If he doesn't want it washed out, he can pave the end of this driveway.
Yeah.
I mean, well, he has to pay it. I mean, it doesn't seem like he has a choice, right?
Well, he doesn't have to.
No, he doesn't have to do anything.
Oh, he doesn't have to?
But this is his problem, he doesn't pay.
We have to fix, we have to fix that shit to make the stormwater go in, into the drain. But I'm confused. We have an ordinance that says this needs to be paved. Doesn't he have to do that?
Yeah, we select, we didn't, we didn't make him do it.
So the fact that we, we, it's been so long, then what do we have?
Well, Mark says it's still on him.
I believe we could try to, I mean, if, if push game to shove, then we have the ability to try and force him to do it. I mean, that's not what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, if.
Should we pay for him to comply with the permit that he shouldn't have?
So I, I've gotten that part because I'm with you there. I'm asking this other question, and maybe the answer's no, and I'm fine with it. Do we, to be consistent, now, I don't have an answer in my head, just ask the question. So, I, I don't know what to say. So in order to be consistent in the way we govern, or do we need to say, to say to him, you need to get this thing paved? Because that's what our ordinance says. Well, we, I, I don't want to come down, I, I mean, I don't, it's up to you, the board, but I, I don't want to come down on it with that. I'd rather say, Steve, we're not going to pave this. You know, the water is made to go that way. If you don't want the, the stone washing out, then you should pave it because it was required to be paved. Our zoning officer at the time was Dwayne, and I don't know how Dwayne lets that get by.
He was such a nitpiker.
I know.
Were you a resident complaint or?
Well, see a complaint, he says.
I just want to see where it came from.
Steve, but he could also make a case that at the time that we should have held it.
He was the same guy living there at that time?
Yeah.
Yeah, but he got, he got a permit to do his driveway.
Well, it's his problem.
Yeah, I don't think it's a situation where we're somehow liable to pay his driveway.
No, I'm, I'm clear that.
I feel for the guy, but I mean, it's not ours.
Well, and we still have to do some, some square work along here, so Jim's initial estimate was?
Four thousand.
Four thousand, so if we take the paving out of the picture, it drops that down to 2,100.
So we were going to pave the area.
Well, we first thought, okay, that's what we need to do, but that, you know, like I said, I, I knew there was requirement that driveways have to be paved, so when I did some research, I say.
Not through justice, you have to do that.
After the meeting.
Yes.
One, one idea is we do our $2,100. We offer him that if, while we're out there, we'll do, do the paving for him, and, but he has to write a check to the township for $1,900 in difference. Um, if not, we do whatever we, we're going to do, but we're not going to pave his driveway. That's such a, not a very pressing. And I think we do need to do that, the outlook to nowhere.
Right, that's.
That's, that's got to be fixed.
The other, the other side, yes.
It goes back, it goes back to the original question, why are we talking about the set of board meetings, there's a staff meeting.
Look, I, I don't have a problem bringing it up to the board here.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things we talked about. One was that the board meeting was that night. It wasn't like the three or two.
Right.
And second, it wasn't like an emergency situation.
Right.
Is there a general dollar amount that we can say at a board meeting, I'm sorry, at a staff meeting?
I think you could, I think you could approve this at the staff meeting.
Well, but look, I mean, we've spent months on that heater, you know, literally months on that heater, and that's under $7,000. Yeah, but I mean, it's our township money, and look, if we hadn't brought it, we wouldn't have discovered.
Watch, I would have figured it out. I guess the thing is, if it's something like the pipe, right, forget about the cost, the pipe has to be done. It's like a new.
It's, it's, well, yeah, that's our route going through it, and it goes in and, and it's clogged, so it's going to.
It's a good point, that's the board because we're going to have to do it anyways, but something like this where it's a little more complicated and complex, it's good to get a couple people's brains around it. So I, I think you do it on a case-by-case basis if you can.
I don't think we can put a rule on this.
Yeah, I think you just do it, you, you, like you knew, you had.
I know, but I'd say if it's over 10 grand or whatever number, eight grand.
That's another story.
It just feels like way too much money.
We don't do that staff meeting that much.
All right, so do you, do you have a limit in your head?
Nancy, like, as I told you yesterday, I, I look and see, see what the project is. I mean, if it's something that, that is not critical and we have the time, I mean, I'm happy to bring it to the board, but sometimes there's things.
Right.
That are, okay, yes, you know, we have to do this. This is what it's going to cost, and we have to do this.
And now does that make visible to everyone else? So just so the public knows, at staff meetings, there's just two board members. So the other three may never know what was spent.
Well, we do alternate, you know, well, whoever can come, but we alternate every week, and I, and when I do that, I go through to inform the person who wasn't there what we did the week before, so, I mean, I try and keep everybody, so the, the three of you that usually come to the staff meetings know what's going on.
Here's, here's an idea, because there have been times when I've been gone to a board meeting and I had no idea what was going on, even though I read this cover to cover. And Donna has, it happened twice, where she's got literature obtained at a staff meeting. Is it possible that there could be a three, four-page bullet points of what happened at the staff meeting for everybody? Or does that go against Sunshine?
Well, you're setting up another job for John, or Sharon.
Well, we do, we just send out, we send out the agenda, and we, what we can just do next to the agenda, we can just say, this was approved or that was.
The agenda's there, so.
Yeah, but the object of the agenda is not there.
No, that's what she was saying.
Yeah, we can, like you said, on the agenda, you can just say, you know, approved, you know, extra amount of dollars or something like that.
Sunshine has to do with decision-making. If, if a. Sunshine has to do with decision-making. If, if a decision was made and money was spent, that has to be out in the open. If you're getting information, in other words, we decided at the, at the weekly meeting to recommend this, you know, have some kind of verbiage or display information, that's not breaking Sunshine's.
How many were the?
Let me put it in perspective. Before I gone to this, this never happened. It was just something we set up so that we had, so that the supervisors had a little bit better idea what was going on. Because normally, we didn't see any of this stuff. So this was a reasonable way of getting everybody into the thing, so we have alternating supervisors on their meetings. So I'm not sure I'd want to carry it in forever. No, I understand that, but some people have full-time jobs and don't hardly, but they shouldn't be less informed. So the only way one can be fully informed is to call the office and say, what happened at the meeting?
It doesn't have to be minutes or thing, anything like that.
No, I, so I just.
Just an email that says at the, at the weekly meeting, the agenda was discussed and make note of the fact that we did this.
Well, I mean, you do, you do get an agenda every week, so I can give you, next, I'll take the agenda and just put in record what happened next to that and send it out.
That's all you have to do.
Would that tape off?
Huh?
That won't tape off, will it?
Oh, no, no.
That's perfect.
Two minutes, two minutes you can do that.
Yeah, I think that's a great solution.
All right.
Okay, so what do we decide here? We're gonna?
Well, our part we're gonna do, that Steve's gonna have to.
It's already in print. He's gonna pay the first twenty-five feet of this driveway.
Well, again, that's, that's, I would say that's, make him decide.
I don't even make him do that. Yeah, I would just say, we can't pay this.
Yeah, I mean.
That's a really bad precedent to say.
But you, but you will say, in your nice way of saying things, that please note that the highway is, but it should have been paved.
It should have been paved.
And we'll kind of hint in that way as opposed to saying, the hammer's covered.
Right.
Right, yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to do that.
He's a nice guy, he does a lot of.
He would be foolish not to put a pipe there when he pays it.
Well, he, he needs the swale, the, the grass.
Swale is the same as pipe.
Yeah.
That places the water to run.
Right.
Let's see, just one important bit of information for the ways run residents. We just, there was a road issue down there by Dr. Lawrence's place, where the road came far along. We were kind of worried about what might be under there because we tried, some of the older developments have had some insufficient base layers and others. So we did ask our contractor to go out and core the road. So the results of the core said that the base is pretty good, so.
It doesn't need any.
Doesn't need any, yeah, but it was suspicious enough to, to do that, so.
This was the only bad section, and, you know, we don't really know what happened there. But it was cut, excuse me, concave, and it was holding, holding water. And that's why they went back in and milled that and put the crown back in.
Well, what happens in the older developments, there were really no inspectors to inspect things. So the last thing the developer put in was the roads. He was out of money. So, you know, if they had not quite enough stone in the truck at the end of the day, that's all you got.
Do a much better job.
So anyway, we, we do, when we get suspicious, we bore a hole. So that road looks pretty good now. Okay. Um, any public comment?
I have to, I have a whole question. So the referendum going on was approved. So where do we go with that?
Just wait.
We don't, there's nothing.
You've summarized to apply for.
So there's nothing further that has to be done in the township's part?
Um.
Mark?
Mark.
The referendum. Oh, we had to sign the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, no, there's nothing, there's nothing that needs to be done.
So it's not, it's not restricted. It's not restricted.
Certified by the county, and then the county.
Yeah, this wasn't, I was never clear to me whether there was gonna have to be some follow-up action.
They notified the local control.
Yeah, once it's certified, which it was just certified.
Last week.
So we can put a viper bar in the township now.
So that's up to.
No, we're.
Five hundred thousand dollars for a viper box.
You know, they call those things catfish in our counties in northeast Spain.
Really?
Yes.
You know about Spain, John?
As if you're in coffee.
Nor less than here. Also, and one other question, I, I, one other thing I just know, you're talking about possible wind ordinance injunction with this. Having had some experience with community reaction to wind farms in Poconos, I think that's a lot more complicated with a lot.
People get very emotional.
It's, it's, yeah, there are, are a lot of other potential issues. So there's a wind version of glare, which is flicker.
And noise too, right?
And there's a potential, and the noise can be sort of like infrasonic, low, very low-level noise, which can be perceptible inside a house, which can, depending upon the frequency, act as an echo chamber, even though you could be a mile away from the.
I guess what I.
So it can draw, you can get a lot of.
If you don't address it, do we allow, I write that, like?
I don't, well, that's not why.
I'm just saying it's a lot more.
Volume to, maybe it also has the volume of the number of turbines you have. So, for example, where the areas you're talking about, if you go further of the Adirondacks, you'll see signs, no more wind farms. And I drove by and said, why would they have against wind farms? And then I saw the wind farm, and it was just a horizon of these things. And now I understand, okay, you have.
Right, but I know that, for example, flicker in the community out there is very good concern.
So what's, is this, is this?
So what happens is the signs is on the other side of the blade, and the blade, the somebody.
Movie effecting. It's like a movie effect.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
And so then that will come into your house.
You see a shadow.
That'll make you crazy.
Paul, Paul.
It's great.
So East Drumore.
But if you've never had a problem before, it becomes extremely.
Yeah, so East Drumore said, no, they can't be higher than forty feet, which that would eliminate a lot of cars.
With that, yeah, the ones we're talking about.
Giant.
There, we're talking above three hundred feet.
Yeah, yeah, these are, they're, they're keep, they're scaling them down, maybe that's what.
And in fact, they, when, when they were forced to go back and redesign the facility, they increased the height. So then it started out at four fifty, and then the next proposal was six hundred.
Wow.
And so then you, it's all, the visibility issue increases. So everybody else is, the wider circles affected by visibility and possible flicker. And it just, so.
Good point.
I'm just saying, when, when you come time to look at that, you should do that. There are a lot of.
I, I'm sorry, except I'm afraid if we don't do it, then we open a door.
Well, I'm, we have a ordinance here, there, there are requirements for noise.
What about dead birds? It kills lots of birds.
That's, that's why they can only be slow-moving blades now. They used to have fast ones. But let me say one thing, Paul. Paul, I live west of where I work, so every morning when I drive to work, the sun is in my eyes. And every afternoon when I come home from work, the sun is in my eyes. So the sun is something that we contend with all day, except when it's cloudy. It comes up in one spot, goes down in another spot. There's gonna be reflection off of.
Yeah, but the flicker thing, it makes you crazy.
No, it's a flicker, that thing is a very different.
Blades.
Kind of thing. We're not, there is, they actually put anti-reflective coatings on the blades to cover the reflection, but you can't stop the flicker. And the flicker, because these things will rotate depending upon wind direction. Sometimes flicker may not be an issue, and other times flicker may be an issue. And it may have a lot to do with where you live with respect to the power and the prevailing events.
But so, so good note, Joan, it sounds like, you know, we can, again, take some best practice, and maybe we don't want any wind farms, and maybe we can just.
Well, and I'm looking, the sample ordinance here, they're saying that the wind turbines shall be a minimum of thirty feet and a maximum of forty feet.
So that's pretty harmless, yeah.
Nobody's gonna make any money with that.
Paragon has, has.
Some wind, yeah, they.
I mean, I have been out there, but I mean, do you notice them or here? I know you can see them, but, you know.
And that, they've been around forever.
Yeah.
These are not.
Right, that's what we're saying, is there's different kinds.
Turbines that I'm talking.
There's turbines versus.
I'm talking about large commercial turbines. And those, those do, it, it's really a question of how close they're located to population concentration. And that's why the situation I'm familiar with in Poconos is very close to a number.
Everybody hates them. Yeah, if you put them out in the ocean, you know, they're gonna put them out in the Delaware shore, and everybody just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not, yeah, when I say this, I'm not taking a position on whether they're good or bad. I'm just saying, these are.